Sure do. How about you? Go down to Florida?
Kathy, you gotta come up and see our project. You gotta come up and see our project.
Oh.
Or you used to be.
Yeah.
Carol Poindexter, line two, Carol Poindexter. I'm doing fine, Carol. How are you doing? Good to see you both. Thought it's Kevin Rogers from me. Glad.
Yeah, I would.
He didn't make fun of us, did he, Carol? He wouldn't make fun of us, would he?
It was a Kevin Rogers party. Yeah. So he's hosting all that new company. Building in brick.
Nice.
Jerry.
No, them contractors. That is no one.
All right, we're almost there.
Justin's going to be a client for sure, don't you think? Well, they dusted him, didn't they?
All right, we'll call the January eighth, two thousand nineteen, meeting of the Macon County Board of Commissioners to order. I would like to welcome all of you in attendance and as we partake in Macon County's business tonight. Are there any announcements? Anything? Nope? Crickets? All right, before we rise, we'll observe a moment of silence and I'll ask Commissioner Gillespie to lead us.
For George.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Public comment period. I don't have a sheet up here and somebody signed up. Is there anybody here tonight that would like to address the board?
I'm April Moore.
She's an agenda item.
You're, I believe you're on our agenda.
Oh, okay.
So, yeah, yeah. Anyone else like to address under public comment? If not, we'll move on to additions to the agenda. I know we have one item, which is adding a Ross Dodge to potentially the Board of Health. We'll move that under appointments, thirteen B. And then I would like to add maybe eleven, new business, eleven G. As we start the new year, I just want to have just a quick discussion with you gentlemen about our liaison appointments. And...
Ms. Chairman.
Go ahead.
If we could, under reports and presentations, it'd be item nine B. Our social services director, Mr. Patrick Betancourt's with us here tonight and he's going to go over with us some of the impacts, potential impacts of the government shutdown with regards to the Department of Social Services.
Anything else, commissioners? Lori Chester. Great, well, if we can get a motion to approve the agenda.
So, move.
So.
Got a motion by Commissioner Gillespie, a second by Commissioner Shields. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Reports and presentations, fiscal year two thousand seventeen, eighteen audit presentation by Carrie Dunlap with Martin Starrenson Associates. Welcome.
Should be on the desk. Do you see it? Please look at it far right bottom, maybe. Oh, they had those on too.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to be here with you this afternoon. Thank you for allowing me to share some audit highlights with you. I'm Carrie Dunlap from Martin Starrenson Associates and I worked with Lori and the finance team on the audit for the fiscal year ended June thirtieth, twenty eighteen. And I'm going to share a couple of highlights with you. The main focus of this presentation is the general fund. Feel free to interrupt me as I go along or if you have questions at the end, feel free to.
Is that on your microphone?
Am I too far away? Is that better? Can you hear me?
I hear you. I can hear you. I didn't know if they could.
Okay. They might not want to hear me, I don't know. Okay, so just some audit highlights. There is an unmodified opinion on the financial statements, which is the goal of the audit. That means there's no numbers in there that we believe are materially misstated, so that is the best audit opinion you can have. We really appreciate the cooperative staff. Their audit is a year-round list of requests that seem never-ending, so we're very appreciative of the staff that give us everything we need. That they go above and beyond to make sure that they answer all of their questions and there are lots of them, so we really appreciate that. And next, we're going to talk about your fund balance a little bit. The total fund balance this year was right at twenty-eight point seven million, which was an increase of two point, almost five million over last year. The revenues actually exceeded expenditures by five point four million, but then when you back out any transfers to other funds, then that left the increase of two point five million. So that was a very substantial increase this year. I'm going to discuss a little bit about the fund balance. So this is measured by your assets plus any deferred outflows, minus your liabilities and any deferred inflows to get your fund balance. And there are five different classifications of fund balance. You have your non-spendables, which are inventoryism, inventory and prepaid's. Your restricted, which are any external laws and regulations. Any committed, which it would be any actions by the board. And then your assigned, our internal constraints such as subsequent years expenditures. And then your unassigned. So if you back all of these out, your unassigned fund balance was right at twenty-three point four million this year. Next, I'm going to talk about available fund balance and this definition is defined by the LGC and it takes your total fund balance, less your non-spendables and less the stabilization by state statute. And this is the calculation they use to compare you to other entities. And this is your calculation of available fund balance. So it's the twenty-eight point seven minus your inventory of twelve mil, twelve thousand and prepaid's of two hundred and fifty-two thousand. And then you also back out your stabilization by state statute. This increased almost two point six million or almost two point seven million over last year. And this is a view of your fun, available fund balance as a percent of expenditures and transfers out. And this calculation is also used by the LGC to give you an estimate of how you compare to other entities. And their minimum required is eight percent, which gives you a month of expenditures to, you know, you could survive for a month at eight percent, which the county currently has about six and a half months. So that's how you would fare if something really bad happened. That's how much available fund balance you have. Next, I'm going to talk about the general fund summary. So your revenues decreased less than one percent this year and expenditures increased less than one percent this year. So it was very comparable over the prior year. And the next couple of slides, we're going to talk about your top three revenues. So the bulk of your revenues come from your avalourum taxes and that's about fifty-six percent. Then you also have your restricted intergovernmental, which was seventeen percent, and your local option sales tax of sixteen percent. And those combined, those three combined make up eighty-nine percent of your revenues. And that's about forty-five million of your fifty point five million in total revenues. And the next three slides will show you a comparison of the amounts over the prior year. So your avalourum taxes decreased very, very slightly, about two thousand dollars this year. So it was about twenty-eight point four million. The most significant decrease was seen in restricted intergovernmental. So that went down to eight point eight million this year. And that was due to the daycare subsidy payments. They are being paid directly by the state and they're no longer passing through the county. So you'll also see this reflected in the decrease in your human service expenditures as well in the next couple of slides. The local option sales tax, there was an increase of about four hundred and twenty-nine thousand or five point seven percent. So that was a good increase this year. Next, we'll look at your top three expenditures. And I know I'm going through lots of numbers, so if I'm going too fast, just slow me down. But your public safety, human services and education make up seventy-three percent of your total expenditures. The total expenditures, that, those three combined make up thirty-three million and your total expenditures were right at forty-five million. So the public safety expenditures over the prior year did increase about seven hundred and thirty thousand or five point seven percent. And this was due to some new vehicles in the sheriff department as well as emergency management. They received some funds related to the wildfires, so those expenditures were spent here. There were some salary and benefit increases as well. And the human services, this is again, as I mentioned, that daycare expenditure that it also decreased here. So it did, it decreased to ten point, almost nine million and that was a million dollar decrease or eight point seven percent over prior year. The other top expenditure is your education and that increased by a hundred and fifty-six thousand or one point eight percent over last year. So it's a little under nine million. The next slide I have is a brief overview of the enterprise fund, your solid waste fund. And this one is going to look a little bit odd compared to last year. Your cash went, was pretty much the same over last year at twelve, twelve point six million. Your gap and your cash basis net income were both right at five hundred thousand, a little over. And then your cash flows from operations actually increased to one point seven million. And that was due to less cash paid out for goods this year. But then the unrestricted net position, the reason that went from one point nine down to two hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollar deficit was because of the new GASB standard seventy-five that was implemented this year and that's for other post-employment benefits. So in the past, you didn't have to record that full liability, but the GASB standard this year caused us to have to put the full liability on the books. So that created a deficit in the enterprise fund. If you have any more questions on that, I can go into more detail, but that's, that's what happened here. And that was seen across enterprise funds with all other counties that are in the state this year due to that GASB seventy-five adjustment. That's specifically, the net position for solid waste fund decreased by one point nine because of those other post-employment benefits. And then the last two slides I have for you are related to compliance. So there were a lot of compliance changes that took place this year. The direct benefit program expenditures are no longer reported on the schedule of federal expenditures of state awards. So the way that impacts our testing, we have to look at a threshold to see what programs are major. And in the past, with those direct benefits on there, the threshold was over a million. This year, without those direct benefits, the threshold is down to seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So any program that has more than that is now required to be tested and we also still have to have a percentage of coverage as well. So that was a big change this year and on the next slide, I'll show you the change of that. But also, the Office of the State Auditor required agreed-upon procedures to be done for Medicaid. So we had to do that as a separate engagement to test eligibility. That was just another additional thing that they implemented this year. And I know for fiscal year nineteen, they are going to require these agreed-upon procedures for both Medicaid and TANF. So hopefully, TANF at Macon County, I don't think it's a large dollar, so it shouldn't be as extensive.
Can you say that one more time?
Mm-hmm. Next year, the Office of the State Auditor is going to require those agreed-upon procedures for the Medicaid program as well as TANF. So the Medicaid, that'll be the same that we did this year, but they're also going to require TANF to be tested next year. And it will be up, it's completely up to them. They design the procedures and the population, so they tell us what we have to test.
Another number?
Yeah, pretty much. Yep, they have that ability to give that to us, so. But as soon as we know more information on that, we'll share it with our counties, so. And then back to the direct benefit program. So in the prior two years, the major programs, there was two in twenty sixteen and three in twenty seventeen. And in twenty eighteen, we had to test seven major programs. So that was a significant increase. It more than doubled. We didn't do that just because we wanted to. We had to because of the uniform guidance rules. We had to analyze, you know, high risk, low risk, type A, type B. There's all kinds of factors that factor into this. But at the end of the day, we have to make sure that your final numbers on your schedule of federal and state awards, you have to test forty percent of your state expenditures and forty percent of state of federal. So at the end of the day, we had to test seven programs. And luckily, you know, DSS and Finance both were more than helpful to get all of those tested. We do see that trend continuing in the following years. There's just no way around that forty percent coverage without the direct benefits now. So that's just something that we're going to have to live with. And luckily, at least we got through it this year, so next year it'll be a little bit more smooth. But I just want to share that with you guys because I know Lori sees us more and DSS sees us a lot more. So that's kind of the reason we're not here just... So, you know, there's a lot of increased audit hours that we've felt across all of our counties and municipalities. So if you have any other questions on that, just feel free to reach out to me or Lori. And that is all I have for you guys, unless you want to go back to any slides or you have any questions for me. And I will also mention that in your audit report, the management's discussion analysis, that also, that's a great place to just, if you're going to read something in the audit report, read that. And it also mentions your fiscal year nineteen budget highlights. So any revenues, expenditures coming up, that'd be a good place for you to know what's going to be coming in the next year. Which I guess we're almost halfway through at this point, but...
Do you understand that TANF stuff is coming down the path?
Just means we're going to be seeing Martin Starrenson. You're going to email a copy of the PowerPoint?
Uh-huh. I've got it, yeah.
Okay, you got it.
So I'll provide it tomorrow.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
And if you have any questions when you're reviewing that or the audit report, feel free to reach out to me. If you have anything else.
Good job.
Thanks, Jerry. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Drive safely. All right.
All right, Patrick, you're up. Update on government shutdown.
This will be a quick report.
We can wait until nine o'clock?
Thank you for having me. Just wanted to give you a little bit of background on where we've been in the past with regards to government shutdowns and where we are currently. I'll go ahead and give you the punchline now and that is that we, because we've already received partial funding for this federal fiscal year, we don't anticipate any changes to, to our ability to provide services, provided that this shutdown ends relatively soon. And I'm sure we're all hoping that that's the case. Just as some background, there's been four true shutdowns. There were shutdown of twenty-six days back in fiscal year ninety-five, ninety-six, under the Clinton administration. There was a shutdown for sixteen days at the beginning of federal fiscal year twenty thirteen. That's probably the one that we remember the most, just because that's the one that caused us to do a little bit of hoop jumping. And then, of course, this one, this one being so far the second longest that we've had. The problem, the challenge with the twenty thirteen government shutdown was that it forced states and municipalities to make those contingency plans because it occurred at the beginning of a federal fiscal year, October first and through the sixteenth, before any of the federal funding had found its way down to the states and jurisdictions. So in that case, in the twenty thirteen shutdown, states were forced to sort of front some of the money for some of those grant formula programs such as TANF that Ms. Dunlap spoke about, without any assurances, at least at that time, that there would be any reimbursement retroactive from the federal government. You'll remember that federal funding was in fact retroactively reimbursed following the shutdown resolution. But because of the uncertainty at that time, Macon County Department of Social Services developed a shutdown crisis management plan that addressed the impact and planned for contingencies of the shutdown in two specific areas, personnel and programs. That plan was pretty well varied based on the program area because at that time, we had received some funding or we not had received the funding, but there was some assurances that some core programs would be federally funded despite the shutdown. Those being SNAP, which is our, what you know as our food stamp program. At that time, child support enforcement was assured that it would receive funding and Medicaid was assured that it would receive funding. Other services that required protection issues, if you think about adult and child protective services back in twenty thirteen, there was no assurance that federal funding would come through those. So those became what we referred to as unfunded mandates at the time. Because there's a North Carolina law that says specifically, we have to provide those services twenty-four, seven, three sixty-five, it became the county's responsibility to figure out basically how those services would be delivered with the loss of federal revenues. That was a pretty, that was a particularly painful time for us. And we certainly don't want to revisit that, that time. But we did develop a plan to address that. Moving forward to this particular shutdown, we've pulled that plan out, we've dusted it off, we've begun reviewing it. As I mentioned at the beginning, because we've already received funding through February for most of our programs, including TANF and SNAP, our food stamps, we're okay through February. Childcare subsidies has received funding through March. So we likely, if this were to continue, we likely wouldn't feel any kind of an impact until sometime March or April, since we build retroactively. We have begun reviewing, as I mentioned, we've begun reviewing that plan, making changes where we need to. Should this continue, that plan will become the basis for what decisions we'll make moving forward. Obviously, that, those kinds of decisions will be made in consultation with information from US DHHS, DHHS, North Carolina DHHS, Office of Budget Management, as well as the State Office of Management and Budget. And of course, with this commission and in consultation with this commission. So fingers crossed, this shutdown ends sooner rather than later. However, we do have some contingencies that we, we can work with if we need to, if we need to make those kinds of difficult decisions.
Thank you. Any questions?
Questions?
Thank you, Patrick.
Sure.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to new business, updated comprehensive plan. Mr. Joe Dill, Chairman of Macon County Planning Board. Looks like you have several other members here with you tonight as well.
We do. I believe we've got all but three of our current planning board members here tonight. And if I could, to start off with, I would like to say, I've been wanting to get up here and do this for quite some time. It seems like this has been a daunting task that we've undertaken and for a little over three years, this is a project that we've been working on. I know y'all have tasked us with a couple of other priorities in the meantime that we've worked on and come back to it. But our current and former planning board members and subcommittee members have worked diligently to produce the draft that we have for y'all tonight. And if I could take the liberty for just a second to name off all the people that worked on those committees.
Sure.
And planning board members that have rotated off. So myself, Ben Lassiter, Betty Waldroop, Glenn Hedden, Evan Harrell, Andrew Bowen, John Scherl, Bill Futral, Aaron Garrett, Kathy Tinsley, Carol Poindexter, Justin Setzer, Tommy Potts, Chris Hanners and Rick Trevathan have been the planning board members who have worked on this. Of course, Jack Morgan, Joe Allen and Tina Wiggins in the planning department. And our subcommittee members, Warren Cave, Ben West, Kim Angel, Curtis Dowdell, Justin Moffett, Jim Bruckner, Tommy Jenkins, Bobby Coppers, Chris Baldwin, Rhonda Blanton, Chuck Sutton, Brittany Lofthouse, Lamar Sprinkle, Susan Irvin, Terry Bell, Seth Adams, Suzie McCoy and Stephanie Lassiter. And that's been a lot of folks in the community that have gave their input and we've appreciated them as well as our two liaisons from the board, Commissioner Shields and Commissioner Gillespie over this time. And at this time, on behalf of the Macon County Planning Board, I submit the comprehensive plan for y'all's consideration. And if you have any questions, we'd be glad to answer any. And if, throughout the review of it, any changes that need to be made, we'll be glad to work on those.
How many pages? Was it a hundred?
Hundred and one pages. And we have cut that down from, I believe, three hundred that originally come in. So we have put in a lot of time and effort to make it as concise as possible, but still be comprehensive.
Joe, I haven't had a chance to, I'm probably literally thirty, forty pages in. Have there any significant changes off the top of your head?
That's a good question. We've, probably when we first started, we've had and updated a lot of different things. Things have changed, such as South Macon School with some of those projects. I know there's some projects coming up with transportation. Maybe Jack and Joe, Jack, they're in the trenches more so than we are as the planning board to keep us up to date on, on some of that. So I'll ask for any assistance if there's anything there that, big item that I am missing.
The county manager, I think, was fairly instrumental in the original one. Derek, have you had a chance to review it yet?
Not yet.
See how many of your, how many things have had to correct for you?
No, but give me some good, some good bedtime reading.
Public access to is online only?
Not yet. I'm, I'm not for certain on that. I believe it's just went to y'all.
Okay, go to it.
We can certainly do that.
Yeah, I mean, is there public access to the draft, though? I mean, the reform.
Yeah, we can certainly put that online.
It should be. I don't know.
Yep. Yep.
So that'd be online?
Yes.
Doesn't help me, anyway.
Thank y'all. I presume that you're going to be looking for new tasks. Some new work.
Yes, sir.
All right. We'll discuss that, so.
I appreciate y'all's time.
Give it to you just a minute to recognize those members, the planning board that you're, if you'll stand up, we'd certainly like to recognize all those that put in so many hours on this project. So if you'd stand up, we'd like to take just a minute to recognize you all. Thankless job.
Just a couple of comments, if I could, Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
This, working through this plan is, is one of the most time-consuming projects that I'm aware of that the planning board is ever involved in. It's probably the least, most fun as well. So, you know, I just like to say thank you for all the time and efforts that y'all put into it. I think one of the key things with, with this version of the plan is, I think this, this board has worked towards trying to consolidate and make ordinances as concise as possible. And I think this, this plan reflects that. It's, it's very concise, it's very direct, it has information in it that we need, hopefully, in a format that can easily be found. So, so I think, I think, I think they've done a lot of work that, that is going to be pretty great. I mean, the citizens of Macon County and we owe them credit.
Thank y'all. I've used this frequently in several speeches in the past, but kind of, it's like Alice in Wonderland. You really can't go anywhere without a plan. I'm looking forward to dwelling into this over the next month before our next meeting, so we can hopefully pass it. But I do appreciate y'all's efforts and I can't wait to see you. And hopefully, there won't be any major questions. Hopefully, we just roll right there. Jack, I'm sure we'll be in touch if, if anything arises. We definitely appreciate, appreciate what y'all have done, no doubt about it. appreciate what y'all have done, no doubt about it.
Thank you so much.
Y'all are welcome to head out, or you're welcome to stay and hang out with us.
We got TV left. Oh. Call is not over.
It's all game, Betty.
You got a copy, please.
I do. We'll all get a copy right away. And the, the plan that the lady presented.
Yeah. All right. Item 11B, School Resource Officer Grant, Mr. County Manager and Sheriff Robert Hawke.
Yeah, the sheriff's here, I'll invite him to come on up.
Okay. Call Lori up here in a second. As you all know, we've always fought to, to put officers in our schools, and all of you have agreed to ask me many years back, several times, to, to, to continue to look for ways to get monies, grants to be able to, to do that. And so I'm proud to say that in a partnership between us and the school system, we've been awarded two grants, or a grant for two SROs. It's 50% of the funds. The good thing about it is, as long as the school system and us do the proper documentation that we're expected to do, we'll get the same funds the following year as well. So we can only say it's for one year, but the, the good thing about it is, we'll get it the following year too, as long as we do what we're supposed to do. And so we're asking that the county commissioners approve us that opportunity to accept those funds and be able to utilize them. The two schools, the two schools that we'll have covered then full-time is South Macon, which right now we have a temporary SRO that, that's working there, and then also our Macon Early College and SEC campus. The other SRO will be providing the security for, and the services that an SRO does for those two schools combined, because they're right on the same property.
So these will be two new positions?
Correct.
Is there a SRO at South Macon now?
There is temporarily, and that's who, that's who will be there.
Sheriff, is there a grant agreement that needs to be approved?
Uh, I, I believe the school has done that with the school board.
The money goes to the school. The school applied and it goes to them, just like the Nana Hala SRO, and then we just have to request the funds from the school when they send them to us.
It's the same, it's the same grant that we did before for the Nana Hala.
I don't think we actually had a grant agreement, because it kind of comes through the public school fund, kind of the funding allotment.
That grant was only supposed to be for two years, and if you remember, we got it for four, and then five, and then it ran out, and then they had another process to apply for this new grant, and that's what we applied for.
Now, the way that was presented at the liaison, Lori, and Sheriff would probably remember that, that even though nothing's guaranteed when you're dealing with a grant, that if, if everything was done like it's supposed to be done, that they didn't see no reason that this grant would not be perpetual. Is that the way you understood it, Lori?
I don't think I was involved in that meeting.
Well, we were, so that's, but that's why, but you know, you, a grant's a grant, you don't never, from year to year, but they, they seem.
Just like Nana, Nana Hala, I thought it was a continual thing, but it stopped after last budget year. We don't get it any longer.
So we don't know. I mean, you don't ever know, but that's why.
We got it for five years.
Is that the way you understood it, Sheriff?
And we were only supposed to get it for two.
Yeah.
And we ended up getting it for five.
But you understood that even after that, that it would, that, that this grant for SROs especially was going to continue?
Correct.
That's what we were led to believe in.
Correct.
We don't, nothing's guaranteed, we know that.
Things change in Raleigh.
Yeah.
And this is, this is through the Department of Public Instruction, that's where the funds came from, that the school system was able to apply for. I know Jackson County applied as well, and I think they got three positions, and the county commissioners are giving them another three, so they're getting six SROs this year to fill all their schools like we are.
How many was the grant for?
Well, we applied for 56,000, and actually were awarded 66,000.
So we're getting 66,000 per year, and those two positions you're costing us, how much?
Fifty, Lori has those numbers.
About 110,000 for salaries and benefits.
Each are together.
Together, and about 2,800 for training.
I'm sorry, what?
About 2,800 for training.
2,800 for training and 110,000.
Yeah, and I'm just rounding here.
Is the 2,800 reoccurring every year? We, we have to track every year?
I don't know, do you have to train them?
Yes.
Year every year?
Every year, in service and, and our updates.
So the total request is what, 60?
The grant's 66,67. However, I didn't know the Nana Hala was going away, so we budgeted 39,722, so we're actually only gaining, I think it's about 26,000 of revenue. So that kind of puts us in a little bit of a quandary, but we're already halfway through the year, so if he would fill these positions with the, you know, the most recent payroll, you're looking at half a year, so between what it would cost for half a year, we would still need 30,807 to make it work. And the county manager, if you want to chime in, of our possibilities of where to take those funds?
Well, we, you know, and it's something that, this will be operating funds, so next year, while this is half a year, we'll pick up the full amount moving forward, or the full amount of our match moving forward into fiscal year 1920. As far as this fiscal year is concerned, you know, to make this, we could look to fund balance. If you don't want to look to fund balance, we, and we could look to fund balance with, with the intent of getting us through the remainder of this year to be able to get to next year where we can work it into the operating budget paid for by operating funds. Second option is, we have budgeted some funds in a courthouse security line item for staffing as per the recommendations, whenever they're, they come out, what might come from the courthouse security committee. That has since, since we have began conducting the space needs analysis, and this amount of funds that, that were budgeted here for courthouse security are in the amount of about 50, let's see here, 55,881. And that was for two officers, half a year here at courthouse, to enhance courthouse security, but as we have conducted the space needs analysis and the courthouse security committee has kept working, you know, we're still waiting on some recommendations to come out of that, and we're still waiting for the recommendations of the space needs analysis as well. So if the sheriff would be comfortable with it, you know, we could look to those funds that would keep us from having to go to fund balance, with the understanding that whenever we get to some final recommendations on the courthouse security, undoubtedly there will be recommendations in there that require or that are suggesting us to provide additional staffing for new security measures that we.
When do you expect that to be pulled back from the board?
Well, now that the space needs analysis folks have came in and started conducting that study, we want them to have the opportunity to go through and provide their recommendations, so we'll get those recommendations from that architectural firm that has specialized in courthouse security projects previously. And right now, the, the timeline on that space needs analysis for the completed project is six to eight months. So that will put us into the next fiscal year before those recommendations come out.
How many SROs are on staff now?
We have, I'm glad you asked, I'm glad I wrote that down, we have nine current full-time SROs.
But it's nine full-time.
We got one temporary SRO.
Temp means?
Means that it's being, I have somebody that's a full-time SRO through our agency that's in a different unit, but he's there. He's, he's covering that school. We can't have a full-time position there and apply for this grant.
But this position is at South Macon.
Correct. And because we had some incidents that took place, I wasn't comfortable waiting to put somebody at South Macon. And so I have somebody that's gone to school, LET certified, North Carolina law enforcement, and gone to SRO school, and I'm, I'm utilizing him out of another position in my department temporarily, until we can get the funding for it.
So that's the only school?
SEC and the Early College.
I mean, your standard K-12 or?
Correct. All of them, all of them are, I've got them all covered.
You got two at Franklin High?
Got two at Franklin High School. And that's thanks to Gary Shields, because we only had one, and Gary Shields is one of those principals that really fought to have a second one before he left, and we were able to get a second position, because it, you can't, you cannot work Franklin High School alone.
What is the plan? I mean, Amelia, when you're sitting around talking or formulating plans, what is the plan from the Sheriff's Department?
Our goal has always been, since day one, before I was even the sheriff and was just the person that hired the first two SROs through a grant, is to have an SRO in all of our schools. And we've worked really hard to try to, to get that, and we're, we're, this is an opportunity for us to do that. It's not gonna, it's not 100% guaranteed to prevent, you know, a tragedy, but the thing about an SRO, they do far more than, than just work security at a school, you know, they're involved with the teachers, they're involved with the students. We've had over, I don't know the exact number, I will round it off, it's, it's no less than 4,000 contacts between our school resource officers in the last fiscal year for the SROs in our school system with students, faculty, where they document, where they've been able to document, whether it's counseling with a student, counseling with a teacher about a certain situation, or, or problem they're having at home, or working with another outside agency to provide services to those kids in our schools. So there's a huge amount of time that the officers spend with, with, within the school system, working with those kids and faculty.
Thank you.
And of course, we, we don't, we don't supply the SRO in Highlands, but you all supply the, the funds to Highlands, and so that's in the city limits of Highlands, and the, and the police chief was our very first, the very first SRO that I ever hired at Franklin High School, and, and so when he became chief, he really fought to have the SRO under his department, and he has that, which is a good thing.
And David Adams is not willing to do that at Franklin High School?
Uh, I, no, David, it's, it's, it's not our police chief, our police was very supportive of the SRO program.
Yeah, yeah.
Very supportive. It was above him.
We need 30,870.
30,807.
807 to finish this year.
Right.
But this one officer is already in the budget that's at South Macon now.
No, he's not in the budget as an SRO, he's in another position within Sheriff's Department.
Where we're hurting.
He's in the Sheriff's, but.
But not as an SRO, yeah. Because basically you're, I guess you're short in one area.
I'm short in my jail. He's a certified law enforcement officer slash detention officer slash SRO.
In other words, you just, you just basically robbed him from one place to put him in.
Temporarily.
For an SRO, we got to have one.
It was, it's, it's on me to keep my school safe, and people were upset that we didn't have one there after we had an incident down there, and my goal was to keep that school safe and to keep people from coming in and coming down on you guys for us not having somebody there, so I, I made sure somebody was there, and I've took care of that for five months now.
But we have improved access security right at both buildings.
The school system and us are working hard at doing that, absolutely.
But if you sit and watch the video, Robbie, that we've watched many times from Union Academy, there's no question.
Oh, absolutely.
That answers every question.
Absolutely. I wish I would have actually brought that for y'all to see.
That, that answers every question.
He actually made it into the school door before the door could shut. The principal ran back in, and this 300-pound guy, we still don't know why he did what he did, but.
Was he a student or?
No, he's an adult male with mental problems, and was able to get into the school, and he attacked the principal and attacked my officer, and they tased him, and three officers took him down. Pending case.
Sheriff, how do you use the, just out of curiosity, how do you use the SROs in the schools you own?
I'm really glad you asked that, because that's been a question that former commissioners have really questioned why, what they do, and thank God we have SROs, because during the summertime, everybody knows that our, our population rises. During the Christmas holidays, SROs aren't in school, they're able to fill in in other spots. We had two officers that were injured here during the Christmas holidays, and they were able to fill in on those spots. In the summertime is when the SROs aren't allowed to go to training as much as they are in the summer, because if, if they go in the school year, I have to find another officer to take their place. So we try not to let them go to training during school, and so they do a lot of their training during the summertime. Also, I've got 75 other employees that like to take their vacations, and so in the summertime, most of the employees take vacations, and so SROs can fill in. And our job is a little different than most places. A lot of times you can, you can take that and have a void and it's okay, but us, just like the dispatchers, you have to have somebody sitting at the desk, you have to have patrol officers, and so the SROs are able to fill in in those different spots. And nowadays, you're only out of school for what, six weeks, the schools, and then most of the schools aren't empty all summer. You've got summer school that goes on.
The guy in Highlands, he's through that school virtually every day in the summertime.
Yeah, yeah, and we have the same thing. So they stay really busy, and I'm glad you asked that, because somebody else may have been wondering it, because it always gets asked.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we fund the amount determined by the finance director to fund the SRO program to match the grant as determined at 30, I forget the exact amount, 30,000, whatever.
30,807.
And that money may come out of fund balance. That money to be removed from fund balance.
I have a motion, Commissioner Bill.
It's like that one.
Second, Commissioner Shields, any further questions or discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Appreciate it. Thank you, sir, appreciate it.
In your mind?
Thank you, man.
Thank you, Sheriff. Item 11C, Discussion Concerning Industrial Park Soccer Field Concession Stand, Mr. Manager.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. If you'll, look in front of you, I've provided you with a printout of the industrial park property that, that we'll be discussing here. This originated sometime back with SEC, and Commissioner Gillespie can chime in, you know, as he was involved in bringing this to my attention. Basically, the piece of property you see here, pin number 6574533994, it belongs to Southwestern Community College at the industrial park. That piece of property extends about halfway into the soccer field there, northward, if you look, and it makes a little, comes to a point there. What SEC is requesting from us, and this all comes back to, this came at the advice given to SEC by their legal counsel, for liability purposes, you know, the county uses these soccer events that, that use this concession stand, and, and essentially the attorney for SEC wanted to limit SEC's liability. So SEC was originally wanting to parcel this piece of property that, if you'll just follow that road line, that orange road line that runs from west to east there, down the road, they were wanting to parcel it there and give us the piece of property that contains the concession stand. After Chester did some research, it turns out that they can't give it to us due to general statutes and limitations that, that are placed on SEC and this piece of property. So they can lease it to us to limit their liability, and, you know, the county would be in a lease agreement with them specifying terms and conditions as, as we see fit. And, you know, the county would be in a lease agreement with them specifying terms and conditions as, as we see fit and negotiate during this process. But prior to that, we need something, if it be the pleasure of the board to go that direction, we would need something that parceled this piece of property out. So we would need a survey. Got a quote to do this survey from sprinkle surveying, twelve hundred and fifty dollars. That will essentially sever or divide that property there and give us something that we can have a map of and draw a deed or draw a lease agreement from, once that is in place.
Do they not already have a survey?
No, they don't have a survey that would be doing, they don't have a survey that would be doing what we need to do with this piece of property. We did find the old subdivision survey, that didn't get us where we needed to go. So we've got to just find the corners and draw a line. So with that request, and if the board deems it appropriate to move forward doing this, I, I would suggest that we make a motion to appropriate the twelve hundred and fifty dollars needed to conduct this survey from the contingency fund. And allow, once that is completed, allow Chester to use that and, and draw us up a lease agreement that would be satisfactory to both parties.
What Mr. Manager said earlier is a key component. The Southwestern identified this property as being used by the county and, and we're excited to give that property to the county. So the Southwestern is not, is, is not going to cause any hardship to the county. They're, they're actually going to just give the property to the county. The county uses it, the county needs it, so let's just give it to the county. But sometimes things don't always look out to be as easy as they should be. So that's, that's why the thought was to have a lease agreement, just so there would be something in writing in the event that needs to be.
Chester, is it feasible to make this a long, a very long-term lease? So it doesn't have to be renewed every year? Can it be a ten or a twenty year or however long?
Yeah, I, I think it could be.
Would that be satisfactory to Southwestern to do it, so twenty year, twenty, whatever it might be?
I think we, what we might do is just propose whatever this board would like and then we can, then at that point in time, if they need to back dial it back or increase it, then they certainly can recommend doing that.
Mr. Chairman, with that, I would make a motion we appropriate the funds out of fund balance to contingency to have the survey done.
Motion by Commissioner Gillespie, a second by Commissioner Shields. All in favor? Any further questions? All in favor? All right, thank you, Derek.
Yes, sir.
All right, item eleven D, resolution and lease agreement with the Jim and Mineral Society. Mr. Attorney.
Gentlemen, the resolution or proposed resolution and lease is part of your agenda package. It would be a one-year lease with the understanding that the parties would revisit this at, at some time prior to the end of this one year with the understanding it may be for a longer period the next time. Got information that we needed a new lease with them with insufficient time to do the publication required by statute in order to, to do a lease longer than one year this evening. But there does need to be a lease in place.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we, that we accept the lease prepared and, and and we do know that we have spoken with the Jim and Mineral folks and they, they're very, they're, they're good with that. So these are very good tenants, bring a lot of folks to Macon County, so.
And the resolution?
And the resolution.
All right, we have a, a motion for the resolution and lease agreement by Commissioner Bill. A second by Commissioner Gillespie, all in favor? Item eleven E, occupancy tax penalty waiver from Franklin Home Store. Mr. Attorney.
Yes, gentlemen, the board, Franklin Home Store, Ms. April Moore, they have been paying occupancy taxes here in Macon County in connection with the business that they do here. There have, have been some penalties imposed due to, I think, failure to, to file and to pay timely. And so Ms. Moore is here this evening. I think she has some extenuating circumstances that she would like to raise with this board. And I wanted to bring to the board's attention that under the occupancy stat, occupancy tax local bill that authorizes that, the Board of Commissioners is specifically authorized by that local act. It says the Board of Commissioners may, for good cause shown, compromise or forgive the penalties imposed by this subsection. Now, Lori Hall is the administrator of this occupancy tax and Ms. Moore provided to her office a memo, if you will, of the reasoning that she gave in order to support some relief from the penalties which had been imposed. I suggested to Lori that she provide to each of you a copy of that communication. And I would encourage each of you to take just a moment at this time, if you've not already done so, to review it. And then afford Ms. April Moore, who is here this evening, the opportunity to address the board further or answer whatever questions that the board might have.
Thank you, Chester. Before we hear from Ms. Moore, Lori, can you just give us a, just a quick update on what's owed? How much is owed and current penalties being?
Sure. Yeah, the, the penalties that are in question total five thousand one hundred fifty-eight dollars and forty-three cent. And that is broken down between the, our legislation imposes a ten dollar per day penalty. So that amounts four thousand three hundred and forty dollars. And then there's five percent interest once it's...
Four hundred days.
Well, it's multiple months. It's May, June, July, August, September. And then I think might have been, there was a carryover from a previous month.
There, there are returns required to be filed each month.
Each month, right.
And each day, one of those returns is late filed. There's a ten dollars per day penalty.
So there's replica?
And a five percent penalty in addition to that. That's not what Macon County came up with. That's what the legislature in Raleigh came up with at the time they passed this bill. But the legislature did, as I said, indicate that the board commissioners may, for good cause shown, compromise or forgive the penalties imposed by this subsection.
So if, if the, if there was zero penalty, zero interest or anything, what's the total amount owed?
That's the good thing here. The taxpayer has paid the taxes.
So it's just the penalties now?
The penalties, right. And what I was going on, necessarily...
Do we have the authority to waive the penalty, Chester?
In this particular situation, under this, you do. But news flash, on avalorum taxes, absolutely not, with the exception of four very, very minor provisions that you should consult with either Richard Leitner or myself before you can release or waive. Here you have much broader discretion. In fact, what, basically all you have to do is find good cause shown if you're inclined to either A, compromise, in other words, reduce some portion, or to excuse. I will tell you if, if that decision, if you should make a decision to compromise or excuse for good cause shown, if you find good cause based on what is presented to you, that's a, that's a decision that is probably not going to be disturbed should it get challenged in court.
This money would be due, it'll eventually end up at Franklin TDC?
No, it goes to the school.
Okay.
All of this, any penalty earning has to go to the school by statute.
By constitution goes to the school board.
Okay.
So.
We do keep an administrative fee, which we have the right to do so by the statute.
And that is, I just had a curiosity.
Eight percent. We just apply the same, yes, the same eight percent, so.
We're being educated here on these things I didn't know. I mean, penalties, and you're responsible for administering this penalty phase of this program?
Right, my department collects the occupancy tax each month and then we send out penalty letters if people are late, yes.
I mean, ballpark penalties per year?
I've got dollars. No, you mean how many people?
Yeah, cases.
I don't know, um...
So you're the only person that actually polices or enforces?
It's not, yeah. It's my department, right.
I don't mean the correct grammar, but the occupancy tax legis... Yeah, by, by the local bill, the, she is the one that is responsible. Her office is the office that's responsible for doing that. It's not the tax collector. Yeah, there's no enforcement to this. I mean... Well, actually there is. I mean, should, should there be a need to do enforcement, she would turn it over to county attorney? Oh, yeah, yeah, but it's kind of a self-policing occupancy tax program. In other words, there's no, there's no administrator or anybody out looking for people who do not pay it.
There is not.
Right.
No, and there's no telling how many people that do run out that...
It's an honor system, yeah. Just like Department of Revenue is, is kind of an honor system.
It's like paying your taxes.
If somebody reports it, then yeah, we're going to reach out to them and send them a letter and say, hey, we see that you're renting the cabin.
But for example, Paul, there's, there's no one, there's like, literally like, how many BRBOs in Macon County? Two thousand more, twenty-six hundred? There's nobody that patrols those to see if they're being rented or not, or if they're paying or not.
The what, Airbnb?
Vacation rental by owners where people rent their house?
Oh.
Or Airbnb, similar, very similar.
So Airbnb does not pay, I mean, they're not required?
They do, they, they have, they want to submit it in a lump sum, but they will not give us the ownership information of the people who are they, who they are collecting it for. So now we have, we have held well in excess of a hundred thousand dollars in checks from Airbnb to Macon County that we have not cashed because they are not in compliance with the way we do business in terms of tax collection. In other words, how can we say that John Doe has not paid their taxes if he says, hey, I'll give mine to Airbnb? They wrote y'all a check. But now Airbnb won't give us that information if they have collected from him or not.
So what do you do with those things? Getting off on the side note here?
They're sitting there.
They're sitting there. We've had some dialogue with Airbnb, hoping to resolve that issue. We had communication with them two, three months back.
Yeah.
I've reached out.
We're off, we're off the track here. Ms. Moore said that she would be willing to pay the five percent in her?
Yeah, that's what I was trying to get to a minute ago.
But I simply cannot, she had on the ten dollars a day where the problem is.
Yeah, that's why I was trying to break it down.
How much of that runs back to that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So the, the ten dollar per day penalty is four thousand three hundred forty dollars. And then the interest is eight hundred eighteen dollars and forty-three cents. So you combine those two together and that was the five thousand one fifty-eight forty-three.
Thank you.
Chester?
Yes, sir.
Um, could, you mentioned good cause shown. Can you give me a definition, definition of good cause shown?
Yeah, um, we don't have any guidance by the case law of North Carolina in this particular setting of this local bill. However, we do have a lot of guidance by our appellate court decisions of when a judge does make a finding based on good cause shown. And in a nutshell, what it amounts to, it's a determination that rests in sound discretion of a fact finder, in that case a judge, in your case, this board. And the facts and circumstances of a particular case shall govern. And the case law basically says it'll not be disturbed unless there's been a clear abuse of discretion. So what I'm saying to you is you, to some degree, you've got to look at the facts and circumstances of this case as presented by Ms. Moore in the home store. And satisfying your mind, one way or the other, has good cause to do something in the way of either compromise or excuse, does it exist based on those facts? And that's for your determination within your discretion.
Ms. Moore, has anything changed in your, since, this is December the fifth, it's been a month or so ago. So has anything changed since you wrote the letter?
I did pay two thousand two hundred dollars in excess in fines. And, and I do want to make it clear that I have never tried not to pay the tax. It's just I couldn't do it in a timely fashion. But I've been paying the tax for ten years. I've paid in excess of seventy-two thousand dollars in taxes.
But has anything changed in your personal situation from when you wrote the letter a month ago? I'm sorry.
It's gotten worse.
Gotten worse since you wrote the letter a month ago?
As expected.
But you're still in business? You're still, you're still doing the business?
I hide in my office from my home.
And once this is resolved tonight, then you're, you're back on track?
I'm on track now, I just, it was terrifying.
So was she seven thousand dollars in rear ears and paid two thousand, Lori?
No, the two thousand was for other months that were delinquent. That she paid the penalties, yes.
Are you, you feel comfortable about going forward?
Oh, yes, I have to. I'm self-employed, that's the only income I have, I have to move forward. It's just that as, as a single business owner, I found the penalties are heavy. I don't mind the five percent, that's fine. And it's the ten dollars per day per filing.
You understand that does come from North Carolina legislation, not from this one?
I do, and I, and I don't, and I congratulate you on the good job you do and thank you for doing it. I couldn't do it.
How do you keep out of this mess again?
Oh, I'm, I'm back on track. I can't hire anybody, there's nobody that I can hire to help me. I'm just, I work until ten, eleven at night.
Yeah, she has paid October and November on time. And of course, December's not due until the twentieth of this month, so.
Have we ever done this before? I don't never remember seeing anything like this before this board.
This is the first time we've come to offer a waiver.
But you're going to have another one next month.
Next month, yes. But this year to date, we've collected fifty-five hundred and twenty-four dollars in penalties. And then last fiscal year, we collected about half of that, about twenty-five hundred dollars.
This is a larger amount, I mean, this is a large amount of money.
It is, yeah. And that's why it's risen to the level of, you know, asking for forgiveness or compromise of some, you know, of the penalties, so.
And I think Ms. Moore is proposing not an entire forgiveness, but instead a compromise whereby she would pay the five percent penalty, but request that the ten dollar per day penalty be excused.
That's correct.
I have in my memory, back in the nineties, we did have, I'm saying we, the county did have a person employed to be the enforcer.
Jay Nicholson was the first one.
And that didn't last long. It's not a PR job, we're going to try to do that. Then we've never had anyone after that call.
Could I interject a thought? My business, I have always been at a ten percent disadvantage with the rest of the county. And I, and I've volunteered in the past to show the county all the people who have never paid state or occupancy tax. And I come out of the gate with every quote at a ten percent disadvantage because I do pay the tax.
I agree, so, or what you're saying then is that you can show us people that are collecting that tax?
And not paying it.
And not paying it in. I see what you're saying. And that does, because you are paying it in, I see what you're saying.
And there's no real doubt about that.
That doesn't surprise me at all.
That's no surprise.
Not at all.
It's random.
The county should welcome that information.
Yeah, I agree.
Oh, yeah.
I've volunteered the information before in writing to the tax office, and I know how to catch them.
I can, uh, tell you all that it's a constant, every TDC meeting, in attendance of, it's a constant conversation, constant.
Can I look at this five percent and give us some feedback on that and see what?
It's eight hundred, it's eight hundred and eighteen dollars and forty-three cents, the five percent is, that would leave a balance of four thousand three hundred forty dollars, is that correct, Lori?
That is correct.
And that'd be forgiveness?
Well, that's what, that's what Ms. Moore's asking for, is, is that, that's the big penalty, that's the ten dollar a day. She's willing to pay the five percent interest, but the ten dollar a day is where she's in the rear, but she's caught up now.
Yes.
But this is what she got behind when, if you read the letter, when all this, when a lot of these tragedies were taking place in her personal life, that's what got, got you behind, looks to me like, right, Ms. Moore?
Yes.
I mean, it looks to me like she, Ms. Moore, you tried to do the right thing, uh, all along, and it was a series of events in a very short period of time, uh, that, that was, uh, that affected you personally and financially big time.
Personally, mostly, financially, I do not mind paying the taxes, and I am up to date with all the taxes, I'm not asking for tax forgiveness, and I'm willing to pay the five percent, I'm just asking for the fine forgiveness.
The penalty.
Yeah.
And the fine, the fine is determined by law?
By legislation.
By, by the local bill that authorized the collection of the occupancy tax.
The local bill.
Then, uh, but the county commissioners have an option to circumvent that by law?
The specific language appears in, uh, in sent bill nine forty-eight from nineteen eighty-five, chapter nine, uh, sixty-nine, sent bill nine forty-eight. Under, um, par, section one, paragraph D, the board of commissioners may, for good cause shown, compromise or forgive the penalties imposed by this subsection.
Miss Chairman, with a history of Ms. Moore and, uh, and, you know, she's had a history of paying what she owed, and if you read the letter, there's no reason to dispute what's in her letter, uh, so I'll make a motion, we accept the five percent interest and waive the ten dollar a day penalty as presented.
For good cause shown as presented.
With good cause shown as presented.
I see. A motion by Commissioner Bill, a second by Commissioner Shields. Any further questions or comments? I would like if you provide, be happy to provide that information to the county.
I will gladly do so, it will help me and you.
That's correct.
Thank you, Chester.
We ain't voted yet, you better wait.
We haven't voted yet.
Well, it'll, we'll all be on a fair playing field.
Any further questions? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Um, all right, item eleven F, I scheduled the budget, the budget, not the bucket, with the budget kickoff.
Bucket kick, the bucket kick. Bucket kickoff.
Bucket kickoff.
Yes, sir, uh, budget kickoff meeting, um, again, bucket kickoff meeting, however you wanna call it.
Bucket. Kick the bucket down the road.
Right now, you know, that's where we set our goals for the coming fiscal year, pass out the budget calendar. Last year, we conducted it on a, on a weekday, we started at twelve and got out about three thirty or, or four o'clock. We're proposing to do the same this year, and, and the date that we tentatively selected for your consideration is Thursday, February the seventh, twenty nineteen, and we will start that.
Say, I'm sorry, say it one more time.
February seventh, Thursday, February the seventh, twenty nineteen, start at, uh, twelve o'clock.
In here.
In the commissioner's boardroom, and, um, have those discussions.
Does that work with everyone? That's good for me.
I'll let you know at the next meeting. Probably better be out now because, um, that's good, the next meeting will be, yeah.
Pretty good, Paul.
I was looking to see whether we needed to recess.
That's on a Friday.
Thursday.
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 Thursday, February seventh.
How long you think it'll take, three, two hours, you said?
Yeah, three, number three hours.
Okay.
We'll get you here.
We'll just do it here in the boardroom.
In the commissioner's boardroom.
Yeah.
What time are we starting?
Twelve o'clock.
We'll be discussing goals.
Goals for the coming budget year that the board has.
And then do our mid-year review, and, you know, we update you on the financials.
Think we can have the schools, uh, think we have the schools six months to see where they're at on their budget?
Yeah.
It's always good to, I mean, it, it does, I think we'll have, we'll try to have a liaison committee between then and then, I don't know if we can work in or not.
Kinda see where they are.
Is it a lawsuit or liaison?
Liaison.
Okay.
We'll try to have that too.
Yeah, we'll, we'll certainly invite them to that meeting.
Yeah.
All right.
I'm, uh.
We'll try to get you set up.
I'm, I'm just gonna throw out just a, a few quick thoughts, just so, uh, you gentlemen will be prepared. I'm personally, just right off the bat, not expecting any major capital projects to be thrown at Derek until we get through with the CIP or get that information back, um, but I, I do, uh, I do expect some, uh, very hearty discussion about, but just because we're in a revaluation year, uh, about the tax rate, uh, and, uh, the revenue generated, so, uh, as well as our previous year's expenses. So Derek, I, I know you're gonna have to be on your ballgame, you and Lori both that day, um, 'cause I'm sure there's gonna be some questions, uh, arising. Uh, I was just thumbing through, uh, what we've been discussing tonight, uh, this audit report, uh, there's really a lot of good information in there that I think we can pull from, uh, for questions, I encourage us to ask them, uh, and, and be ready, uh. I just think it looks good, uh, for this board when we can, uh, hopefully unite, uh, whenever we're through with this budget process. And I think it's, uh, looks good on both floor, as the county, enter county manager, when we, hopefully we can come to terms, an agreement and a consensus on this board to reach a consensus to agree on the budget at some point. I, I hope we're able to do that, and I hope that, uh, you gentlemen are ready to work towards that. Now, like I say, I'm, I'm expecting the most hearty discussion to happen on, especially after we heard what the, uh, the, the fund balance was, uh, this year, so. But anyway, I'm just looking forward to that, I don't wanna incur any discussion on this tonight, I just want y'all to be ready, and I'm sure that'll be a, a major topic. Again, any, any different thoughts on that, Derek, or anything that you need us prepared for, for you?
If you have any, if you think of any questions and wanna email them ahead of time, give us a, give us some time, if it's something we need to look into, um, that'll be good.
I think that's a great idea. All right, moving right along, uh, liaisons, um, I did not make any changes this year to our liaison committees. I just, I just figured I'd throw it out there real quick, we still can, if there's any problems or anything y'all wanna discuss, if we're making changes, I just thought I'd bring it up real quick, and if everybody's fine and happy with where we are, we'll keep on trucking, and, uh, I'm, I'm gonna probably go ahead. I'll tell you right now that I'm, if, if I'm chairman next year, whoever's chairman, I'm gonna make a suggestion that we change things up, um, uh, for next year, just because, uh, gosh, how long have you been with the sheriff?
Twelve years.
And I would love to learn, I, I would love to be your liaison and work with you. Education, I think it's a good time, I like, I, I, I was clueless with the Board of Health, and now I feel like I have an outstanding understanding of, of the Board of Health, roles and duties, and it might be good for, uh, Commissioner Shields to be a part of that, and just move around the county and put a different set of eyes, uh, a different set of perspective, uh, some thoughts into, uh, the different, uh, departments and boards and committees that we're responsible for, so I think next year, if, again, if I'm chairman, whoever, I'm gonna make that suggestion that, uh, we do a complete change of house on what we're working on, anyway, but for this year, we'll just leave it as is unless somebody needs or wants a change.
It's a good idea.
Okay. All right, uh, the consent agenda, we'll get a motion to approve unless there's somebody who'd like something removed to discuss individually. Lori, make a motion.
Yeah, I know, right, Paul, make a motion.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion by Commissioner Higdon.
Sorry.
Second by Commissioner Shields, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, appointments, uh, Community Advisory Committee for Long Term Care. I'm, I'm, there, there's a good one that I'm a little clueless on, somebody bring me up to speed on it, and what they do, and.
You don't tell me. The Long Term Care Committee is, um, uh, they meet once a quarter, and, uh, the Long Term Care Committee is, um, they certainly, either through the Southwest Commission or, uh, whoever can, uh, delegate complaints that might be filed, or, um, some situations with adult daycare center that might be going on, like right now, we're short on health. The ratio's one to eight in our adult daycare center, and as of today, we are, uh, we're short on that, uh, we're short on people. We're taking applications actively and vigorously and, uh, trying to find some folks. We had some unexpected departures from that department, so we had, there's some folks that come every day that can no longer be there today because we don't have the folks to take care of them, uh, you gotta stay within that ratio, you'll really get, uh, you can really get some problems, so. That's just one example, the adult daycare committee, and, and if there's anything, uh, coming down the pike, they, they meet once a quarter, there are, uh, they can be very active, and sometimes there's not a whole lot going on, Miss Chairman.
All right, it looks like we have seven members that need to be reappointed, uh, Helen Burnett, Dorothy Crawford, Pam Goldsmith, Jean Hawkins, June Hawkins, Lisa Henry, and George Taylor, can we get a motion to?
I'd like to make a motion to those folks, uh, keep working on their longevity.
We got a motion by Commissioner Bill, a second by Commissioner Shields, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, then we have another one for the, uh, Board of Health, and this individual will be, will be filling the, Mike, I presume, they'll be filling the public, general public.
It's a general, it's a general public law.
Okay, I, I'm not familiar with, uh, Mr. Dodge, Ross Dodge.
I thought I knew everybody in mental health stuff, but I still don't know Mr. Dodge.
Ninety-six wide circle, I'm, I'm excited that we have somebody that's interested in serving, we've had two or three seats open for quite some time now, so.
Yeah.
We get a motion to approve, Mr. Dodge. Got a motion by Commissioner Bill.
Yes, sir.
A second by Commissioner Shields, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, that concludes our normal agenda, I, I do think there is a closed session, Mr. Attorney, is that correct?
No need for a closed session.
No need for a closed session?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion to go into closed session, Mr. Attorney.
For reasoning, uh.
Attorney client privilege.
That's right.
Must have something to ask me.
Okay. Do we expect any action when we come out of closed session?
Yes.
We do expect that, okay. Sorry, y'all, hang in there.
Get paid by the hour, do you need?
Yeah, okay.
Did you watch either football game, Ryan, did you watch what? Huh?
I watched that one.
Oh, did you really?